Welcome to the open mic session. The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern in the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage, debate, or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee appreciates speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least eighteen years of age or enrolled in high school in the public schools district and have discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will probably commence fifteen minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. And we have a list here. If you could just start just by sharing your name and address. And the first one is Sheila O'Neal.
Good evening. My name is Sheila O'Neal, and I'm the president of Lynn Teachers Union Local 1037, and I'm a resident of 200 Locust Street. During contract negotiations for our 2225 contract, the union and school committee agreed to statements of shared interest based on the bargaining for the common good. Fully staffed schools is one of those commonalities. Full staffing. The parties recognize the importance of having schools staffed with educators and support personnel to meet the diverse need of our ever-changing student population. The employer shall strive to staff every school with adequate professional direct service providers, including mental health counselors, occupational therapists, speech and language pathologists, board-certified behavior analysts, and foreign language educators and fine arts educators. During this week of teacher appreciation, the union learned of the administration's freezing of positions beyond the initial hold of district coach positions ordered during the posting of positions in April. These positions included special education resource inclusion, speech and language, and English language development educators, as well as core content educators in math, science, and others. This week, parents were also informed of the district's DESI status of the lowest ten percent and the ramifications of that rating. As a grandparent of an LPS student, I am questioning how the district thinks that freezing and understaffing our schools will best serve our students. The union is aware that the administration, when faced with public action, has now backtracked on some positions, but still have ELD, resource inclusion, speech and reading specialist frozen, as well as the thirteen coaches. Our schools were not fully staffed this school year, but they must be fully staffed moving forward in order to serve our students adequately. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Phil O'Connor.
Good evening. I'm Phil O'Connor, Second Vice President, Lynn Teachers Union. I'm a teacher at Reed, and I'm here to read a letter from one of my members who was unable to attend tonight. Speaking as a classroom teacher, classroom teachers are already overworked, overwhelmed, and struggling to meet the vast and varying needs of the students in their classrooms. Taking away vital support is going to lessen the effectiveness in the classroom, as well as make the students more frustrated due to being unable to access the ever-changing, difficult scripted curricula without the support they need to be successful. Behaviors are on the rise because students are already not getting the support they need due to staffing constraints, social emotional needs, and the number of students who need differentiated instruction. We are trying to do our best with less. The administration seems more invested in moving departments and spending an exorbitant amount of money on rent at Bennett Street, State Street, Marcus Street, French Street, and more I'm sure I am missing. Administrative positions have been yet to be frozen. In fact, they've been hired at an alarming rate, but vital education positions have been frozen. We cannot staff our current buildings. However, we have new initiatives coming down the pipeline. Maybe we should focus more on the conditions of existing buildings, staff, curriculum, and students before we add anything else. Every time I write a letter, I say how disappointed and frustrated I am as an educator working for LPS. I truly feel I can't get more frustrated or disappointed than I am each time. The school committee is supposed to work for the well-being of the students and the staff of Lynn, and I'm asking for you to think about what looks like, what this looks like, before you agree to these requests. The best way for you to show your respect for the teachers this teacher pre-ashin week would be to support us and our students and ask the tough questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Larry Loggin, and I'm a retired fourth grade teacher from Washington Elementary. And I also work a few hours a week at the LTU office for membership organization. I'm here because I care about the students and the teachers of LPS. That's because I lived in the trenches every day. I know from experience about teaching in this district that students deserve full funding and a top priority for DESI mandate services. Our students and teachers deserve lower class sizes. DESI mandates are violated every day, ranging from the lack of services to the amount of time it takes for a student to be evaluated. I live daily the effects when students with ed plans and our EL students were not given their state mandated supports. These actions cause a serious domino effect on the student learning and the burnout of teachers. Our students need more support and less upper administration. Are these upper administration positions being frozen as well? I ask each of you on the school committee, when will you last in an LPS school building long enough during the school day in order to get the larger view? LPS needs upper-level administrators who are in buildings seeing for themselves the reality of being an LPS student and an LPS teacher. A classroom visit needs to be more than a few minutes. These visits need to include talking with teachers and students and getting the full picture. I know that Kim understands that, and I always appreciated her involvement at Washington. Happy retirement, Kim. You're gonna love it. I'd like to challenge members of the school committee, spend one full day visiting a school. Talk with students, talk with teachers, before making rash decisions. Decisions like freezing positions and others that follow need to be collaborative. These decisions are difficult but need to be made with the complete knowledge of the reality in our schools. I urge this committee of elected officials to postpone any votes until each is able to be enlightened with the facts through an experienced visit. A vote to freeze positions at this time when schools are so understaffed is irresponsible and will deepen the overwhelming violations of meeting DESI mandates, and it will cause your dedicated teachers to leave for better-paying positions and less stressful positions in our neighboring towns. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Miriam Rodriguez Fusco.
Good evening. My name is Miriam Rodriguez Fusco of 10 Lambert Avenue. I am a twenty-one-year veteran LPS bilingual speech and language pathologist, currently serving my fourth year as a special education team chairperson at LBTI and Fecto-Lary. I speak here tonight on behalf of all the students that need the support of an SLP and for all the SLPs that work tirelessly for those students. I speak from my own experience as an SLP who started her career in Lynn twenty-five years ago. At that time, I was assigned to two schools whose students had not had the services of an SLP for over two years due to understaffing. Over the past four years, as a team chairperson, I find myself still helping to fill in the gaps left by the understaffing of SLPs at LPS so that the parents can have the required evaluations for their upcoming IEP meetings. And also, after twenty-five years, I remain the only licensed bilingual SLP in the district. How is that in over three decades the district has yet to resolve these issues? I speak here tonight to highlight the impact of speech and language services for our students. The ability to communicate clearly and effectively is a skill that permeates across all areas of academia and beyond. There are many in this room tonight who know someone who has benefited from and recognizes the importance of the services from an SLP. If you truly want to elevate the DESI rankings for our district, then please help stop the vicious cycle of underserving the LPS students and prioritize always maintaining a fully and appropriately staffed SLP department. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Heather Lang. I'm a special education and ASL teacher at Lynn English High School. This is my twentieth year teaching, and I've been working in LPS since 2020. As many of you know in this room, teaching is not a bell-to-bell job. In addition to my special education responsibilities, I advise two after-school clubs, I do graduate schoolwork, I have numerous professional developments I participate in, I have advisory, homeroom tasks, after-school committees such as SST, I'm on the superintendent's teachers' council. I competed in and placed as a semifinalist in the Massachusetts 2025 Massachusetts Teacher of the Year contest this year. I teach, I write IEPs, I grade papers, I write lesson plans, et cetera, et cetera, much like many of my peers. As many of my coworkers did, I took an added responsibility of teaching a sixth class this year to help ease the burden of the, in my building by, one, it being understaffed, but more importantly, to help provide an opportunity for my special education students that I work with to have the consistent presence in their schedule of a teacher every day in their classroom. Thankfully for me, the class I chose to work with, I had previously taught that curriculum before, but I still had to do a lot of prepping to get ready right away, and unfortunately left me with no prep time at all this year. I do all of my prep at home. Additionally, we are being asked in our building to repeatedly cover classes during both our preps and our admin duties for teachers who are either absent or for positions that are still unfilled in our building. They are currently positions that are filled by a series of subs or teachers that are being pulled from their own admin duties and prep periods to fill in, myself included, every week. Yes, there is some small compensation for teaching a sixth-period class, but it is small. By the time you pull out the taxes, it's not really worth the pay, especially when you consider you're losing your prep time every single week. The teacher part of me always comes back to, I'm doing this for the kids. You have to remember, you're doing this for the kids. But the logical part of me realizes that the burnout is real, and this is not sustainable in the long term. Bottom line, we need more teachers in our buildings, not fewer. Please reconsider, as this will have a long-lasting ripple effect if it goes forward. I worry that LPS will risk losing amazing teachers as a result of this. We have already lost too many as it is, and I don't want to lose anymore. I see too many of my amazing colleagues walking out the door every year. I don't want to lose more of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Curly. That's how it's written.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for hearing me. I want to tell you first, I don't want to be here. I would much rather be home. I come to Lynn every morning at 6:00 a.m. to work with my students, to try and prepare them for life. At the end of the day, most of the time, I go to my second job. I work about twenty hours a week for another, for a drive-in school to try and make ends meet. I bust my hump every single day in my building trying to make a difference. Our space problem has created a situation where we have two teachers in a room frequently without enough seats for the students that are assigned to that classroom. We have a space issue that is overwhelming. I have talked to each, to many of you on this board, to you and to all of you, and I've said the same thing over and over and over again. I'm going to say it one more time. We need teachers, and we need space. We need student-facing teachers who are qualified. And if you freeze hiring qualified people, we are going to end up in the same issue over and over and over again. Teachers in space, student-facing humans. That's what we need. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for open mic?
I didn't sign up for this.
Yes. Just your name and address.
Hi, my name is Michael Lopez, 294 Wentworth Avenue in Lowell, Massachusetts. I am a drama teacher at Lynn English High School. I've been teaching for over twenty-five years. When I first started teaching high school and directing, I thought that my job was to go into rehearsal and to be the leader and to make all the decisions and to make all the choices and tell all the kids what they're supposed to do. And when a student came to me with a suggestion for a show, they had an idea, I usually took a front at it of like, I'm the one that knows. I'm the, I'm the expert here. And it took me a while to learn that I had a wealth of riches at my feet with my students, that in a rehearsal, when we're looking for creative ideas and, and we're trying to put a show together, that I'm not the one that has all the answers. I don't believe that there should be an adversarial relationship between the faculty and staff that are in the schools and the people who are in the administration building or the people who are sitting at this table on the school committee. I believe that it's a job that we should all be doing together. We say that we all have a common goal. If that's the case, then we should be working together. We should not be butting heads and fighting with each other all the time about everything. And you have a wealth of experts in your classrooms and in your buildings, people that know exactly what's happening in those buildings on a day-to-day basis. Ask them. When there's a problem like this, ask them before you make a decision about something like this. Ask us. We're not children. We're professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for open mic? Anyone else want to speak at open mic? Last call for open mic. We will then close open mic. Thank you all, and begin our ninth regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaitley?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Sadowite?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
If you could all please rise for a salute to the flag. Next item is the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the following minutes. Committee of the whole meeting on April 25th, 2024. Should I do them individually?
You can do them.
As a group?
Yep.
Okay. B, Building and Ground Subcommittee on April 25th, 2024. C, Eighth Regular Meeting on April 25th, 2024. And D, Policy Subcommittee Meeting on April 30th, 2024.
Second. Is that a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next is the school nurse election. What's the recommendation of the superintendent?
The recommendation is to have the appointment for Maya Sewell. What is the will of the committee?
Motion, is there a motion?
Motion to hire Maya Sewell, BSN.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Maya Sewell.
Member Dugan?
Maya Sewell.
Member Gaitley?
Maya Sewell.
Member Peña?
Maya Sewell.
Member Reed?
Maya Sewell.
Member Sadowite?
Maya Sewell.
Member, Mayor Nicholson?
Maya Sewell.
Next item is the presentation of certificates to our student school committee participants. We have been so honored and grateful to have you with us this year. Thank you so much for your incredible participation and your leadership in the Lynn Public Schools. We've been proud to be your colleagues this, this past year and want to take a minute to honor you. There were two other students who joined us this year who unfortunately had prior commitments. One is receiving an award, so understandably must be away, and the other had a baseball game, so we wish him the best on the diamond. But I want to take a minute to honor both of them before we present these awards to Julian and DeeDee. So Andy Lee was the representative from Classical. Andy is Ivy League-bound. He chose Harvard out of his many impressive acceptances, which included Brown, Cornell, and Stanford. When he gets to Harvard, Andy will major in mechanical engineering and minor in math. He said his other hopes and aspirations include bringing people together as teams and groups to better the community and those around them. Great work, Andy. Nevyn Gonzalez Kuhn is a wonderful young man who has put forth so much effort over his four years at Fecto-Lary. He's absolutely a staff favorite of ours, and we are so excited to see him graduate. Nev is an avid baseball player, which explains his attendance this evening, and he currently plays third base for Tech. He plans to attend Mass Bay Community College this fall. Thank you, Nev. And with us this evening, we have from English High School, Julian Perdomo Guerrero. This is a long list of the places where Julian has gotten accepted. Emmanuel College, Gordon College, Merrimack College, Bridgewater State University, Penn State University, Salem State University, Suffolk University, UMass Amherst, UMass Boston, UMass Dartmouth, UMass Lowell, and Westfield State University. Her dream school is that she would love to attend Merrimack College because they have a great social work program. That's incredible, incredible aspiration. Her top choices are Salem State, Merrimack, and Emmanuel. Thank you for all your work this year.
Thank you.
And then DeeDee Oxuyana from Lynn Tech. DeeDee will be studying public health in college next year, so she is waiting on financial aid packages before making her final decision on which college she'll be attending, but she was accepted to UMass Lowell, UMass Amherst, George Washington University, MCPHS, among others. She's a student in Lynn Tech's Health Assisting Program, a teen health ambassador for Girls, Inc., which strengthened her interest in the medical field. DeeDee plans on focusing her studies in epidemiology and is excited to learn about medical research. We have a couple certificates here from the Lynn School Committee. Hereby extends with great pride and appreciation our most sincere congratulations to Julian Perdomo Guerrero and DeeDee Oxuyana for your participation as a student representative for the Lynn School Committee for the 2023-2024 school year. The mayor and members of the school committee are honored to recognize your outstanding accomplishment and respectfully offer our warmest encouragement and best wishes for continued success in your endeavors. Congratulations.
Go ahead, guys. I'll follow suit. It's a little cramped. I think we should, like at City Hall better. Yeah. Much more comfortable. They got better chairs. Everybody looking this way with smiles? Glasses off, right? Okay. Thank you. All right.
All right. Next item is the Bellwether District Strategic Plan.
Okay, we want to welcome up to the table Akisha Craven Howell, who has returned to present progress and planning in our district improvement plan. And she is from Bellwether. Welcome, Akisha. Welcome back, I should say.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. It's, it's good to be with you again today. I'm going to share just an update on where we are so far in the process. When I was here with you last, in late February, I was able to share with you kind of our plan for the twenty-three weeks or so that we are collaborating together. We've completed phase one of our work together and are moving into phase two, and so want to give you an opportunity just to hear what we're learning and how it's informing the work going forward. During our conversations tonight, we'll just re-ground you in the strategic planning process, just remind you of the steps that we are taking, share an update on what we learned during the current state assessment, and then we are well into our phase one work. And so would also like to just give you an update on the progress that we're making there so far. As I mentioned, we are working together over the course of a couple, a couple of months, and we started with a current state assessment, and that's where, really where we'll dig in deeply tonight. It's important to understand where the district is starting before we begin to plan where the district wants to go. And we are, have completed that current state assessment, are moving into our phase two work, and the first part of that work is really setting the goals. Where does the district want to be as a result of this strategic plan and the work that will go into it? And then once we have our starting place and then where we want to go, we'll do the hard work of identifying the priorities and initiatives that will take Lynn from where it is today to where it desires to be in the next three to five years. As we assessed Lynn's current state, we had a lot of different kind of pieces of information that went into that assessment. We certainly reviewed student outcome data, talent data, both publicly available and what Lynn Public Schools provided to us. We also looked at documentation of the district's current priorities and work. We were able to visit five schools, and stakeholder input was a very important part of that current state assessment. You can see here just a listing of everyone that we were able to speak with. I will tell you that the numbers on this page have even increased since I submitted this report a week ago because stakeholder engagement continues to be an incredibly important part of this process. Ultimately, we want this to be a plan that the entire Lynn community sees itself in, can get behind, and be a champion of. And so we want the voices of the community to be in the creation of the plan. We've particularly appreciated opportunities to speak with, with teachers. We've had opportunities to speak with the superintendent's teacher cabinets. We've had several focus groups of teachers who are spending most of their time with English learners, teachers who are spending most of their time with students with disabilities. And we've really appreciated the candid nature of their feedback because it very much helps us to understand both the district's strengths as well as opportunities for improvement. So what are we hearing? When we framed the current state assessment, we did so using Bellwether's district and school health assessment. You can see across the top, there are eight different domains, and then within each of those domains, there are additional areas. You can see here just a listing of everyone that we were able to speak with. I will tell you that the numbers on this page have even increased since I submitted this report a week ago because stakeholder engagement continues to be an incredibly important part of this process. Ultimately, we want this to be a plan that the entire Lynn community sees itself in, can get behind and be a champion of. And so we want the voices of the community to be in the creation of the plan. We've particularly appreciated opportunities to speak with teachers. We've had opportunities to speak with the superintendent's teacher cabinets. We've had several focus groups of teachers who are spending most of their time with English learners, teachers who are spending most of their time with students with disabilities. And we've really appreciated the candid nature of their feedback because it very much helps us to understand both the district's strengths as well as opportunities for improvement. So what are we hearing? When we framed the current state assessment, we did so using Bellwether's District and School Health Assessment. You can see across the top, there are eight different domains. And then within each of those domains, there are additional areas that we dig deeply into. So what I'll share over the next few slides is just kind of a high-level summary of some of the key takeaways, including emerging strengths as well as opportunities that Lynn might consider addressing as part of this strategic plan. As it relates to academics, one of the things we heard about consistently was the district's investments and efforts around making sure that teachers had high-quality curriculum in hand. We heard that as an emerging strength, as well as the time that's built into school schedules for teacher collaboration. We also heard that there are opportunities to strengthen that work as well. Certainly, the pace of curriculum adoption has been challenging, both for school-based professionals as well as central office professionals who are supporting principals and teachers at school. We also heard that, you know, challenges related to the teacher pipeline can often make collaboration difficult, such that even though we have that time in the day, teachers aren't always able to take advantage of that time. And so what are other opportunities to create space for collaboration and adult learning so that students get the full benefit of the investment in the high-quality instructional materials? Related to school culture, we also heard a lot of very positive things here, especially related to the positive relationships between adults at schools. There's a real culture of teaming among the adults at the individual school level. When we spoke with students, almost all of them were able to name at least one adult who they feel in their school has their best interests at heart. We heard students who say they continue to come to school because of a particular adult that they named. We also heard pretty consistently of opportunities to make sure that those kinds of relationships are reaching all students and their families. We heard a lot of feedback about the demographic and identity differences, frankly, of the adults in our schools relative to the population of students and some of the disconnect that that can create in terms of cultural awareness and proficiency and opportunities to strengthen that as foundational for strengthening academics as well. Related to talent, I think, you know, we certainly heard universally that there are a lot of incredibly strong teachers in Lynn, many of whom who have been here for years and years. There are also a lot of very new teachers to Lynn and also some teachers who are, you know, currently working on an emergency license. And so we heard a lot about opportunities to strengthen the talent pipeline, to further leverage the growing and emerging strengths in the HR department, especially around onboarding teachers, helping them to feel very attached to their schools, providing differentiated support for those teachers who may be coming in on different types of licenses. Also, related to talent is around that adult learning plan, especially as it relates to all of the curriculum that the district has recently adopted. In terms of an emerging strength in this area, as we spoke with district leaders, there is already awareness of that of this need and already some plans and progress being made about how to create some changes for next year to address some of the feedback that the district is already hearing. And so we see a lot of positive momentum around adult learning, especially in pacing it so that teachers can take advantage of it and then really differentiating what's offered based on the experiences and the needs of the teachers in the classroom. Related to community engagement, we are fortunate to have a number of community partners on the steering committee, which already just indicates on the level of engagement of the community partners within the city of Lynn. We also heard from some of these partners that they want to engage even more, which is a great opportunity for the district. They are looking for ways to align how they are supporting schools, how they are supporting the broader district, to the district's goals and to individual school goals. And so looking for ways to be even further looped in on that work. And so that is a great opportunity to extend the resources of the district to those of the partners in your community. Related to leadership, we observed just a lot of shifts that we see as really positive, an opportunity to align leadership structures with the most important priorities and needs of the district. With that, the collaboration and communication structures are also shifting. And so I think at the time that we were speaking to folks, you know, a lot of the organizational structure had shifted. And then those communication and collaboration structures were still in development. And so we see an opportunity to create some alignment there and to really increase and increase the frequency of both communication at the central office level, but also between central office and schools, keeping our school-based stakeholders very much engaged and leveraging their voice in decision-making as well. In this process, I had an opportunity to speak with each of you one-on-one and really appreciate your level of engagement and the wide range of connections that you have to the district and the lens that each of you bring as former district employees, as parents and caregivers of students, as family members of teachers, that contributes a lot to your understanding of and commitment to the work within the district. It really stood out that you that each of you expressed kind of a difference between your role in terms of governance and oversight and management. So a lot of clarity about the role of the school committee relative to the role of the superintendent and her leadership team. Several of you offered up opportunities for more school committee collaboration and shared learning around the work that you would like, just kind of a deeper understanding of some of the strategic priorities of the district. And also a desire for a recurring cadence of updates related to data aligned to goals. And I know that that is a goal that the superintendent has expressed as well. And so it was great to see alignment there. Within strategic planning, we really focused on annual planning. And so a strategic plan represents the district's priorities and goals over a number of years, typically three to five. And one of the things that really supports that strategic plan coming off the page and being something that actually drives the day-to-day work each school year is to have annual plans aligned to the strategic plan. Building towards that, we are seeing that principals engage in school improvement planning, which is also a really important way of translating the district's goals to individual schools. And so certainly a strength that we already have principals engaging in that process. Also a strength, the district's recent investment in building out the data assessment and accountability team as well. It's incredibly important that the district be able to communicate and assess where it is against schools and do that for individual schools and classrooms and groups of students as well. And so we see that as an incredibly important investment. And then just continuing to build on implementation with both quality and fidelity to the district's plans. It's an incredibly fast and high-level overview of the current state assessment. There's a lot more detail that sits behind all of that work that we've gathered over several weeks. And that really informs then our work as we move into Phase 2 of this process. And so if Phase 1 focused on the district's current state, in Phase 2, we want to focus on the district's future state. And so really articulating what we kind of call the North Star Goals. What is the thing that's really guiding the district's work and priorities and investments? And we have to define those first before we come back to the center of the picture that you see there and define the strategic priorities. We have to know where we're going before we define how we get there. When we think about how we want to capture those North Star Goals, we do it in two ways. The first is the graduate profile. And that's really an expression of what we ultimately want all of Lynn Public Schools graduates to experience, the skills we want them to have, the things we want them to be prepared to do in the world when they walk across the stage and get that Lynn Public Schools diploma. We also look at the intended impact, which is a statement of if the graduate profile is what we are ultimately aiming for for all of our students, what is the work that we're going to do over the next three to five years to get us closer to that? So the graduate profile is slightly more long-term. The intended impact is specific to the years that the strategic plan is covering. So we've worked closely with the project leads to draft both a graduate profile as well as the intended impact. We have four broad categories for the graduate profile, and each of them has some detail underneath. But so far, we have identified that we want graduates who are critical thinkers and problem solvers, that are engaged members of the community with global mindsets, that are effective communicators and leaders, and that are continuous learners who are empowered to chart their own path. Related to intended impact and what the district will aim to achieve over the next three to five years, you can see that there's a focus on both academic as well as social-emotional growth, that there is a focus on equity and excellence and the extent to which it is both valued and supported. And then we get into a few more specifics around our students meeting and exceeding grade-level expectations, having access and success in advanced coursework, that we want families and students to feel a sense of belonging and inclusion in their schools and in the district more broadly. And that we have an increasing number of schools in the district who are making progress toward their annual targets. I will tell you that this work is iterative. Even the intended impact statement has slightly shifted and just kind of been more refined in the weeks since I have submitted this report to you because we just continue to improve upon and make this work better. We are at a place now where we are ready to share the profile of a graduate and the intended impact statement more broadly. And so we will be sharing it out with students and families and teachers and principals and central office personnel because, again, we want the broader community's input and feedback on these two statements in particular. Because, again, they will serve as the goals that will inform the priorities that the district will invest in and work towards over the next three to five years. Once we have that graduate profile and the intended impact in place, we'll begin to work on the strategic priorities. And so I always, you know, kind of think of this picture here as the strategic plan at a glance. Once we identify those priorities and initiatives, that work should move us towards achieving what we've identified in the intended impact, which will move us toward achieving for all of Lynn's students what has been identified in the graduate profile, which ultimately leads towards, over time, the vision, mission, and values that Lynn Public Schools has articulated. And those strategic priorities will really begin to take shape over the next several weeks. Again, using that intended impact statement as our anchor, we will begin to define the lagging measures of success. And so you saw that intended impact statement is words that is helpful for engaging people and understanding the work, but we also need quantifiable measures. And so that is where we will go next. We will then look across a number of inputs to identify the priority work that is needed to drive towards success. So continuing to get stakeholder input, but also really going back to that current state assessment. What were those strengths that we can build upon to get to that intended impact? But also, what were the things that surfaced as opportunities, things that need to be addressed in order to achieve that intended impact? We will also begin to, you know, continue to work with the steering committee, but also begin to engage smaller teams of subject matter experts because we know that the knowledge about this work exists in Lynn Public Schools. Really, Bellwether's role is to facilitate bringing that all together and capturing it in a set of priorities and initiatives that drive the district's work. And so we will begin to engage small working teams aligned to each of the priorities to help define the work that the district will take on over the next three to five years. I will stop there and welcome any comments or questions that you might have.
Let me read.
Thank you so much for this presentation. The first question I have is around sort of, I know you mentioned the last slide around quantitative data. Was any quantitative data collected in the first round, first phase?
Yes.
I think it would be interesting to see both for the, you know, strengths and some of the areas of improvement, sort of how perception differs across different subgroups in terms of like, what does administration think of someone versus a school committee member, teacher versus a school administrator, that type of thing? Is that possible? I mean, I think that's an important part of the whole vision is kind of bridging those gaps, so.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, across these slides, I shared, you know, two or three quotes from stakeholder engagement for each of the key areas. But certainly, we collected quite a bit more than that. And when we engaged with the steering committee, shared a more detailed report, which I am also happy to share with the school committee.
I'd definitely be interested in that. And then just another question. I know you said additional stakeholder engagement takes place. Is that more on the graduate profile and intended impact? Or is that on the first phase of what you've put together here now?
At this point, we are moving beyond the current state to begin to really articulate where it is that Lynn Public Schools wants to go. And so the next planned set of community engagement is around the graduate profile and the intended impact. And so really getting feedback from a wide range of stakeholder groups around their level of agreement with those as statements of, one, what Lynn Public Schools wants for all of its graduates, and two, as a reflection of the priorities that Lynn will take on over the next three to five years.
Great. I'm sorry, one last question. I think you mentioned this a little bit at the beginning, but did we take a look at, in terms of the first phase or even moving forward, some of the other plans that we have in our school and even city, like the Student Opportunity, SOA Plan, the Elementary Master Plan, the city? Yeah. Vision Land. Yeah, the Vision Land, thank you. Do we take a look at those as well?
We did. In particular, we looked at the superintendent's entry report, which, you know, also included a lot of stakeholder engagement and visiting schools and had a lot of really helpful reflections on the current state of the district. We also looked at the district prioritization plan and the Student Opportunity Act Plan, understanding that those are two that today really define the district's priorities. Our goal is that the strategic plan would be well-aligned to the district prioritization plan and the Student Opportunity Act Plan as well. Because what we don't want are multiple plans that really, you know, kind of dilute the district's focus, dilute already constrained resources. Instead, we want a set of aligned goals and priorities reflected across all three of those plans so that we can aggregate the district's resources and focus.
Yeah. Thank you, appreciate it.
Mayor Peña, Mayor Cassius.
Thank you for the presentation. Couple of my questions are already answered, but let me read. One of the questions I had, because I couldn't find it. What schools did you visit? Because, you know, there's different priorities in different schools. So we, you know, this should be a reflection of maybe visiting more schools. Are you planning to visit more schools in the future?
I don't know. I don't know that we will visit more schools as part of this process, but we certainly leveraged speaking with teachers and principals across multiple schools as well as getting insights from our central office leaders as well. We were able to visit during our two days here in February Ford, Callahan, Marshall, English, and I am forgetting the third elementary school.
English? You said English?
Yes. Marshall? Ford, Callahan, and there was one other one. I wrote it down because I anticipated this question. And then I'm blanking on the third elementary school, but I can get it for you.
Because, I mean, there's clearly different needs, different priorities, different, you know, different schools.
Yes, absolutely.
You gotta try to leverage that, you know?
Yes.
A little more, you know, more input, impact or input from other teachers and stakeholders of the community. There's different roles, you know?
Absolutely.
Different needs.
Yes. And one of the things that we are tracking as we speak with families and students in particular is what schools they attend so that we can make sure that we have heard from a wide range of both student and family, kind of representing different experiences at all of Lynn Public Schools' schools.
And I heard you mention, I was reading grants for further, you know, teacher certification, everything. What do we have, what do you have in place? What are you currently working with right now that we have? Do we work on more additional grant funding for that, for teacher certification?
I do not have the answer to that question. What I referenced in the presentation is as we were doing interviews and asking what was in place to support teachers who may enter without a traditional license or certification, one of the things that we learned about is a grant. That grant is restricted to certain types of teachers, certain licenses, and so it does not cover everyone. And so there is a desire for additional investment that would allow for kind of broader access for teachers to support, to get the licenses and certifications that Lynn needs.
I got this little light goes ESL. Let's say something to me. ESL certification, something like that. Thank you.
Sure.
Member Castellanos.
Thank you for the presentation. I just want to, just checking around the focus groups. So middle school principals, I see there's no numbers next to some of these folks. Is this because you're still planning to meet with them and progress with interviews or?
So under focus groups, the numbers are just the, if there's more than one focus group that we held, the numbers just indicate that there was more than one focus group. And so we had a focus group of special education teachers, but then where you see the four for elementary teacher groups, we spoke to four different elementary teacher groups.
Want to give some feedback that I got back from some of the focus groups. Some of the input gathering felt very expedited really fast. I had staff say that they didn't feel like their input, I think they were, they felt like they were just talking, like they didn't feel like you were, not you, but the process was genuine. I went through the process with, with, I believe, you as well. And I appreciate the, I think it was only 30 minutes or it was quick, but you gave me a couple of extra minutes. But I did have some concerns of not having questions beforehand. I think there's been some concerns across some of those other focus groups around being prepared to handle these type of input opportunities because these are major information points to develop this plan. And I think there were also some concerns around the previous strategic plan initiatives, like what are we cultivating from the previous plan to build alignment for the phases? Like it feels, I think there was some concerns around it being rushed, the feeling of rushed. And this was something that I, kind of after I heard from some of these folks, I just liked the, could you kind of talk about that process and maybe alleviate that?
Yeah. I mean, I appreciate that feedback. I think there's always opportunities to continuously improve and get better. We certainly want to be respectful of people's time, and we're incredibly intentional and targeted in the questions that we ask. I can assure you, we're taking copious notes and really extracting exactly what people say, you know, pulling those quotes into, you know, our assessment of the current state so that it is informed by the voices of the people who are doing the work. That said, as we continue to engage stakeholders, particularly teachers, you know, we can do things like send the questions ahead of time so that people have an opportunity to reflect on those before they come into the sessions. And we are certainly, you know, happy to have longer sessions, and we want to be respectful of people's time.
Thank you. There was also, maybe, I think there was a suggestion of maybe allowing more accessibility to this process to allow folks, whether it's after hours, like you said, like time-wise, like folks want to participate. So I think like increasing accessibility to the participation piece and making sure that everyone's part of this process and that everyone feels included. Because if we're going to have a three to five-year plan and folks on the ground, rank and file, or community members are feeling like they left out of this process, it's going to be, it's not a real, for me, as an elected official, I feel like that's crucial because this is the people's plan. This is our students' plan. This is the leadership, you know, blueprint to achieve student success. And we have to, like I think Mr. Lopez said, we have to align. So in order to align, we have to collaborate. And part of this process, it takes us all together to be at the table. So I just want to put that out there.
Yeah. I could not agree more.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you to, yeah, Member Galey.
So Bellwether is going to lead to our strategic plan for the upcoming years? Because we have to write our strategic planning. And is, this is going to guide us to that?
Yes.
So maybe we need longer conversations when people are being interviewed. And I'm glad there were some positives.
Yes. And understand that, you know, many of the conversations that we have had thus far are initial conversations. Stakeholder engagement happens throughout the process. And so, you know, those initial conversations were intended to give us a sense of how people are experiencing the district today. And then as we move throughout the process and develop the district's goals for the next three to five years, the priorities and initiatives that will lead to those goals. Our intent is to return to those stakeholder groups and share that information with them as well and get their feedback and have them help us refine those. Because to your point, Member Castellanos, like much of this work will happen in the classroom. And so if it is not articulated in a way that resonates with teachers, that is realistic, given the conditions that teachers know exist in their classrooms and schools day to day, it is not work that will ever happen. And we acknowledge that, we understand that, and we build that into our process.
So there was a timeline, and I think if I remember correctly, in January, we had a short period of time, and that's why I think we had to do the 30 minutes.
The, I think the timeline you're talking about is those first couple of weeks in February. And that's really when a lot of internal work was happening. And so I was meeting with the central office project leads to set up the project plans, to decide what schools we were going to visit. But the current state assessment happened over about six to seven weeks. And so those conversations and visits and focus groups were spread out over that amount of time.
So now that, we will be discussing phase two?
Yes.
And teachers will be interviewed for phase two?
Yes. Our first step in phase two is to send out the draft of the graduate profile and the intended impact statement. And we will send a survey for feedback on those statements. And certainly, one of the most important groups we will seek feedback from is our teachers.
So I'm wondering if you're going to go to other schools or you're going to go back? Like I see several people from Lynn English here, so you'll be going to Lynn English again?
We will send out those statements electronically and ask for feedback via a survey. We will also, in phase two, as the priorities and initiatives begin to take shape, go back and have additional teacher focus groups. We will very likely spend time with the superintendent's teacher cabinets. Again, they are an incredibly important group because they were elected by all the teachers in their buildings to represent them. And so we see them as a group of teachers who are engaging the teachers in their building, understanding the interests of the teachers in that building, and then representing those in the superintendent's cabinet.
And will that same thing happen with the student?
Yes, we will do that with the student cabinet as well. And we will also send the graduate profile and the intended impact to students. We absolutely want to know, when students look at that graduate profile, is that something that they want for themselves? And so they are a very important group for us to hear from as well.
Okay, so this is definitely guiding our strategic plan.
Member Satterwhite.
Thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to make note. I think that that will help with if we can't extend the interviewing time for people to feel rushed, that if they do have the ability to have the questions ahead of time, they'll be able to focus on, be more prepared. And that will give you a lot more information on what you need moving forward. Thank you.
It's a great suggestion. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you to all the folks who have been participating, all the teachers and students and staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. We can do recess.
Lynn Residence Council to Classical High School. $2,000 from Kings Lynn Residence Council to Callahan Elementary School. $750 from the Lynn School Employees Local 1736 to LVTI Skills USA. $1,525.13 from Notch Running Club to the Girls on the Run Club at Connery Elementary School. And two folding picnic tables from the PTO to Lincoln Thompson Elementary School.
Thank you. The recommendation is to accept all of the donations for each of the schools, from each of the donors to each of the schools named.
Motion still moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And could we send a thank you note to all of those?
Next is a vote on the school year 2024-2025 school calendar.
The calendar can be found in your folders. The recommendation is to approve the 2024-2025 school calendar at this time with the holidays that are marked, early release, teacher in-service days, first and last day of school, and first day of school for pre-K and kindergarten.
Make a motion to accept the 2024-2025 school calendar for Lynn Public Schools.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next item is the renaming of the Virginia Barton Early Education Center to the Early Education Center. Just a note on that, and this is, I think, going to follow with the proposal to rename the Briar Cliff Lodge to the Virginia Barton Center at Briar Cliff. We, a couple of years ago, voted to name the Early Education Center after Virginia Barton, given her extensive contributions to education and children of the city. And we want to continue to honor that. The current location for that name is not at a facility that the Lynn Public Schools owns, and it possibly will be in flux in the years to come. And then separately, at the same time we're having this conversation, the city had organized a recognition committee based on feedback and ideas to be naming buildings after prominent contributors to the city of Lynn. And during that process, Virginia Barton's name came up. And that was, you know, really on a separate track from the conversation we had here, but I think noteworthy. And when, in that, Council Barton was on that committee, and in that discussion, Council Barton told the story of how, when he was a boy, he went with his mother, Virginia Barton, to protest a United States presidential candidate that was running on a segregation platform. And the bravery that those protesters exhibited in protesting hate in their community and what they stood up to, you know, Council Barton said that they were, threw rocks and insults and really a hard moment for the city and one that, I think, demonstrated incredible leadership on Virginia Barton to lead that protest. And so the hope was to honor that story and that memory and that legacy by attaching the Virginia Barton name to that facility. And then with the more recent decision to have the Lynn Public Schools using that facility, that is what brought that before you today. The Parks Commission has also approved this because the jurisdiction for Briar Cliff was under the Parks Commission. And so now it's before you today to make both of these changes consistent with that proposal.
I make a motion to rename the Virginia Barton Early Childhood Center to the Early Childhood Center.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to, make a motion on the naming of the Briar Cliff Lodge on view site to the Virginia Barton Education Center.
Second.
And if I could just offer a fund, remember, I think they were going to do Virginia Barton Center at Briar Cliff.
Oh, they changed it.
Yeah.
I amend. It would be the Virginia Barton Center.
On Briar Cliff.
At Briar Cliff. No. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
All right. Next item is the fiscal year 2025 budget overview and vote to set a public hearing date for the budget. And just, we're going to turn it over to Mr. McHugh in a minute, and I know we've talked about this previously. And Mr. McHugh will also explain in more detail what the process is. But just as a reminder, that what we've done the last few years is have this moment be our opportunity to receive the presentation and start to digest it so that we can all formulate our questions, respectfully ask that folks submit those questions to give the administration an opportunity to respond and to look into whatever the issues are. And as we've done in years past, we will collate all those questions and the responses and publish those on the website so that everybody can see what the questions are. And then we will still have more opportunities to discuss in subsequent meetings, so. Is there anything?
Okay, thank you, and good evening. Some of you have met Jamie, Jamie Cologne. I just want to officially welcome her. She started with us last summer. She's been awesome working with me in the department. She comes to us with 10 years of municipality experience working in finance. In her last job, she was actually the finance director of a town. So we're happy to have her. She's like jumped right in, understands everything we do, and it's been a great help. She's assisted me with a lot of things. We've been going through schools. She's been out in schools, working with student activity accounts on a regular basis, getting, making sure they're all appropriately being done correctly and working with me through the budgeting process as well. So it's a great, you know, I'm really happy to have her here today. And so I just want to formally introduce her, so thank you. So we'll get into the presentation. As we know, the mayor said that this has always been the first meeting where we hand you the book, and it's hot off the press today. So, you know, we've been working for the last few days on this. So we just kind of, I want to start off by saying as the administration's, our goal was not to have any layoffs. That's our number one goal. I've been here since FY '09, and we had over 100 layoffs that year and 100 layoffs the following year. So that was devastating. And we've been lucky since then to continue to get increases in Chapter 70 funds to build up our administrative, you build up the total cost of teachers. We're well over a couple thousand teachers now. The budget has grown astronomically over the years. And, you know, as you can see now, we have a space crunch because we have so many people and staff, which is well-needed to get our job done. So that's always been our goal, is to make sure we maintain everybody that's employed and continue to employ them. everybody that's employed and continue to employ them. The big concern this year, there's a couple of concerns, is the absorbing of all the ESAR funds. We've all, you've heard of the ESAR cliff. The ESAR cliff happened as we all saw it coming. It was gonna end, and I mean, luckily, we did put, we did unfortunately put people in, and that's part of the big absorption I have to absorb back into the budget this year. So that's one of the things, you know, thankfully, we've done other things, like facility improvements and done some other things. We ran summer school projects and a lot of other work through the ESAR, so it's been very helpful. But the unfortunate part is, it's over, and I'll show you a slide in a minute, what, how that's gonna affect our budget process. And, you know, as part of this, there are still gonna be some additions to this budget, because as we need, we have to provide special education staffing that is required, and there's the need for that. So there is actually some additional positions for that in this budget as well. And finally, with that said, there's still technically a shortfall, and we did this for the last two years with technology. There was no increase to technology. We've used all our savings in the FY24 budget to use those savings to buy technology. The budget is officially been frozen for this year. With that said, I will put the caveat, if teachers or staff need something for between now and June, we're allowing those purchases. But, for example, there were people trying to buy 350 boxes of crayons. I mean, there's like about 25 days of school left. That's like trying to pre-buy for next year. So we're holding those purchases back, so we can buy technology. And I'm also going to use some money to buy the curriculum textbook adoptions, which is helping bringing this budget back into balance. So those were the goals that we set forth this year, and we're continuing. On the next slide, I just wanted to kinda walk through the process, and this has been the big problem. For, you know, you can see for, last year we received $27 million of Chapter 70 funds. This year, we're receiving $18 million. That's a $9 million shortfall from last year. So that has really driven this process that hurt, it's really hurting us right now. I, I didn't anticipate it going that low. I didn't think we'd get 27. I was kinda hoping around 24, you know, figuring that's where we would end up. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, and the 18 has really put a crunch on the school department. We're still lucky we're getting that. A lot of other districts didn't even get this much as well. But with that said, with the ESAR jobs, you know, that's been part of the problem as well. So the next slide, just kinda walks you through. So we received $18 million of additional Chapter 70 funds for FY25. The city's allocation, which pays for custodians, maintenance, and things of that nature, it's $3.7 million, which gave us, allowed us to school to have a $14.3 million budget for this year. Then all our contract obligations, you know, step lane changes, ESAR funding, increases to salaries that have been negotiated, leaves us that $13.6 million of, I have to absorb back into the budget right off the top that left. And then we had some budget adjustments, as I just mentioned. We'll go through those in a minute, which is 2.8. You can see our subtotal, we were over the budget by, we had 16.5, and we need to get back to 14.3. So the budget reductions that you're hearing about are vacant positions. It's $2.2 million, and we, there's a chart which we'll show you. That's how we're balancing the budget out. And just to keep reminding, there is no technology, there's no curriculum adoptions in this budget as well, which would drastically increase this number. So that's why we're using all the savings to kinda keep this in balance. So of the new budget adjustments, there is, in your budget book, as I've always done, there's this sheet. It's in your bucket, it's a page by page, school by school. You'll see ins and outs. So it just kinda helps you, when you look at the budget, you're gonna look at all the different, and it all starts to blur after a while. So this kinda, I call it the cheat sheet. It'll help you kinda see what changes happen in each school or every department. So it allows you, when you get to the last page, you'll see this is the chart, and you're gonna see that there is a net 25 additional positions. And on the 25 additional positions, you can see 10 are for special education classrooms. There's one, there's an integrated K at Aborn. Hood has a coach classroom. Sewell has a DD pre-K. Shoemaker has a coach program. Breed has a new task classroom. Pickering has a coach. Lincoln has a DD K-2. Infectulary has two special education classrooms. That's the 10 classrooms, and you can see the parish. So the majority of that is, that's where the positions are going. You can see, we're gonna be opening the Teams Program in January, up at, as we name it, the Virginia Barton at Briar Cliff. So I just put that as a note, so you'll see that the Administration's actually a director that's gonna be up there to oversee it. It's in the budget, you'll see as a half a seat, half a year salary, because we don't expect to be in there until at least January, and we'll, instead of, you know, we'll have to pay for half a salary for that, as well as a clerical position to go up there. There's a reduction of two jobs. They were grade five teachers, so if you have, for example, five grade fives, but only four grade fours, the four grade fours will roll forward, and it was a reduction of two classrooms, and that was at Callahan and Sewell. They had two grade fives that dropped off. So that's why there's a negative two, a net two. There were some others ins and outs, but you'll see, like, if there's a grade three with four, then they roll to a grade four at four. So you, I have to roll those classrooms forward every year, as those students move from year to year. When you go through, you'll see the sheets that have that. So just wanted to kinda go through the adjustments that we made to the budget, and next. Here's the list of the vacancies in your budgets. You have this sheet as well in your budget book. These are the positions that we have frozen. There is a total of 27 positions. You can see there is an Assistant Director of Assessment. There's a, two social workers, a communication specialist. There are a bunch of district coaches, that, these are all vacant. Currently, there is nobody owning these jobs, nobody in these positions. And what I'm calling is, we're calling them freezing them, because if you go to your budget book, you'll see these in your budget book. I broke them out for a line with a 1.0 FTE, and I put $1. So the goal is, should funding become available after the 1st of July, 1st of the fiscal year, or we have some savings, the goal would be to try to put these positions back in. Obviously, the special ed and the jobs, as well as the MLE jobs, would be probably the highest priority to put back, because that was a classroom jobs or in the school buildings. So we, but this is a list of everything that we've officially frozen. I believe April, we have over.
Over about 203 vacant positions after our internal posting and call-down process that we are looking to fill, and we'll be posting externally for hires.
So we'll still be hiring positions, but these positions, we felt that we could hold off for now. And there, those are all, there's a lot of classroom jobs and other jobs that are, still need to be filled. So we're gonna be looking to hire a lot of people again over this coming year. So I know that we had some talk tonight, but I just wanted to make sure, this was, I was gonna show this anyway, so just so people would understand, if you got phone calls or something, here's the list of the jobs that we're holding back on right now to balance the budget. So with that said, I just wanted to kinda give you a breakdown what the percentages are. You can see that on this one, it's a little small there, but the salaries are 81.6%. That's our budget. We're in the people business. You know, it's all people, and that's unfortunate. And you can see on the 18%, 18.4 is our non-salary. So in your budget, you have these pie charts. You can see on the salaries, you know, 79% is regular ed, special ed, and MLE staff. So almost 80% of our salary budget is staffing in the buildings. So, you know, and you'll have, you can see there, there's support service, social, emotional, school administration is in food service, nurses, you know, there's all the breakouts by department. So I think this is helpful when you're assessing our department and how we're spending our money. And this one is the non-salary side, and you can see, the yellow is special education, and on the non-salary, you have special ed tuitions at 30%, trans, special ed transportation at 21%, and contracted services at 2%. 53% of our non-salary budget is related to special education, which is compliance issues. So I, just to show you, that's a lot, but that's the reality of what we're dealing with, and how we're gonna make this work. And here's the combination of both salary and non-salary. And you can see that 75% is on regular red and special education. So our core service is our teachers. This just shows that we are supporting that, and we're doing that with our budgets. So it's important, and you can have all, again, you see all the little other pieces of the pie that make it all up. So when you review the budget, you, you can see that. Because we, we showed this slide before. This hasn't been updated. We did this last year. This is what we spend on administration per DESI. DESI hasn't published this since FY22. On the bottom left, you'll see that was $513 per student, even though it was 664. So I did a projection last year to show you on DESI that we were under the allocation of FY22, and, and that was still by $10. And this year, we're over by $4, but that's FY22. Now, that number's gonna come up when they publish the new numbers. That'll be higher. So I'm just, I just wanna show you the reality of FY22, and here we are, you know, three years later. We're still right at the number of the 22 average. So from administration, we're on target. We're below the state average, I would guarantee, once these numbers continue to get published. It'll just show that we're not, you know, people can, you know, like to say, we're overstaffed on administration, but this is per DESI, and I just wanna kinda bring that to your attention. So that's kinda the highlights. I mean, next steps, as the mayor said, typically, all the questions have gone through Mary Jewels, and as he said, we will collect them. She'll disperse them to the appropriate people to answer them. Everybody will get all the answers. You'll get them all emailed back to you, and we put them also on the webpage for people. The budget will be posted on the webpage tomorrow morning, and these questions, as they come forward, we'll start posting them for the public to see as well. The budget will be on the agenda at the next meeting as well. If you have, if the questions, we get them enough time and get them answered before, you'll have those. Or if you have any additional questions, this will be still on as unfinished business. You can continue to ask your questions, or even submit questions after that. Our recommendation is to try to have a motion, to have a vote to set the public hearing for June 13th. We have to publish it in a newspaper. We need 30 days in advance to get that done, and that would be our recommendation at that point. And on that day, following the public hearing, we'll have a regular school committee meeting. The budget will still be on the agenda, and it would be, you know, questions still could be asked, as well as hopefully, you know, approval at that time. That's my overview.
Thank you, Kevin.
Now, I just wanna point for a moment to slide six of Mr. McHugh's presentation. Human Resources did a great deal of research, because I did want you to walk away this evening with the information in terms of these positions here that are in red, the, that are being held. The first two were from the Superintendent's Office. I'm sorry, the first one, Assistant Director of Data and Assessment and Communication Specialist. The coaches, we referenced earlier, and the conversation that I had with LTU a month ago, was that the coaches would be held until face-to-face instruction teachers that were in Core were filled first. So that, those may go in July, for the July 1st posting. The positions that are underneath that, if, Ms. Reed, could you just review? I, I just want you to have an idea of why these positions, they've been open, and for how long they've been open, which is the issue. We have not, I think it, some of them have two years that they have not had an actual person. And so the point here being that, as a student-centered, right, district, what we need to look at is, what are the services that the students aren't receiving, and how are we replacing those, when we're not able to attract or bring in applicants for any of these positions for over two years? And so that is really our focus. There have been teachers covering and others covering these different, what the students have needed, but as you heard one of the teachers earlier reference, that it's an overload for them, right? It's a, it's a, something extra that they're taking on. So the money isn't being diverted anywhere else, other than to pay the teachers who are doing the job. They're just doing it in excess of their, their regular assignments, because we have not had the applicants. So could you just go over those last few positions on the bottom, and how long they've been open?
Yes. So I looked at last year's positions that we had versus this year. So for MLE, for fiscal year '23, for the entire school year, we had nine vacant positions. And as of this school year, fiscal year '24, we are at 14 vacant positions for the elementary ELD K through five. And based on Mr. McHugh's vacant positions, there are two being held. For our elementary reading, last school year, there are two vacant all year long. For this school year, we have three vacant currently, for this school year, from the beginning until today. For our elementary resource inclusion, last year we had four positions vacant all year long, and the same goes for this school year. There are four positions. For secondary resource inclusion, last school year we had one vacant all year long, and this year we've had two so far vacant, the entire school year. For our speech and language pathologist teachers, last year and this school year, we've had six vacant that have not been filled. For the LVTI position of special education English, last year and this school year, For social, emotional, last school year, there were three clinicians that were not filled, and this year we have two that were not filled. And so those are the positions that Mr. McHugh has in there.
Great. Well, thank you for the presentation. If the committees are minimal, can we vote to sit down the public hearing, because we need to do that to, to get the 30 days scheduled? So.
Any discussion?
We can, we, let's get the, yeah, let's get that, let's get to our official business, and then we can do that. So, motion to set the public hearing.
So motion to set the public hearing on the budget for June 13th.
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Um, yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
So you just, you just heard the, the overview and the, and the process. Does anyone have any sort of questions? Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess my question is, sort of, there was a breakdown in communication here, clearly. You know, I was getting a lot of questions yesterday about things I had no idea that were happening with the, with the freezes. I understand everything now, so thank you, Mr. McHugh, and for the presentation. So I guess, what happened? You know, how did that, how did our teachers find all of this out before the committee? That's my question, I guess. And I know we, we've had some conversations, and I understand that, but nothing was official, nothing was set in stone, and, you know, I got a lot of messages yesterday of panicked people who feel like they were betrayed, you know, honestly, and I couldn't answer them. And that was troubling to me. So I was really disappointed by that. So my question is, you know, what happened? How, how did that happen?
So I, I'll, I'll take a first stab at that, because I have not been in these conversations, and I'm in a somewhat similar position. I talk with the superintendent frequently, and Mr. McHugh talks with the CFO frequently, you know, so I, so not in the exact same position as you are, but, but I, but I once was. And, you know, we, we've heard from Dr. Alvera, it's a real commitment to be engaging directly with teachers, and I think she reads every other week.
We have, well, right, we alternate elementary and secondary.
And with the leadership of the union as well.
Oh, yes, but, yes, twice a month.
Yeah, twice a month.
And additionally, when there are times of the year where there are human resources issues, like the actual placing of teachers, the vacancies, the calledowns, Ms. Rogero and Ms. Reed have had, you know, they have even more frequent meetings during the week to discuss, and that's actually where the initial discussion of some of these vacant positions that have Ms. Rogero and Ms. Reed have had, you know, they have even more frequent meetings during the week to discuss. And that's actually where the initial discussion of some of these vacant positions that have been vacant for more than a year started with LTU. It was a very transparent and open conversation during an HR meeting that they had over a month ago.
But, and I, just to finish the thought there, and I think that folks should weigh in with their own perspective. But, you know, from my perspective, one of the things, and, you know, we always are striving for the right level of communication and I think there's always room for improvement. But one of the dynamics there is, is if we're having close conver, if the administration's having close conversations with faculty and that includes previewing some of the conversations that are gonna happen in the budget, then that's gonna be ahead of what tonight was the official presentation of the budget. And so that's one of the trade-offs and, and to me, I think that's, I'd take that trade-off, the fact that our teachers are in, having those kinda conversations with the administration. But, you know, one of, and this has happened in other circumstances, one of the effects of that is then it sort of feels like, well, the school committee didn't know before teachers. And then, of course, the alternative to that would be to hold on to the information until it gets officially presented to the school committee, but that doesn't allow for that back and forth with the, with the educators, so.
And that makes sense and I appreciate that. I just feel like, you know, there's clearly a divide and I think we do need to work on that. And it's concerning to me, you know, it's, it's, it seems to be growing too. So it's something we need to work on and so, I mean, I think that's just how I feel about it. You know, we have a lot of initiatives moving forward, these are the faces of it. And again, I'm gonna reiterate what I said at our last meeting, we need them to buy in. So, you know, to have them feeling the way they're feeling right now, we gotta work on that, we gotta work on that. And it's, and it's on all of us, as elected officials, as administrators, it's a collective thing that we need to work on. And I really feel strongly about that. You know, they're the boots on the ground, they're the most important people to our students. In fact, in our bellwether presentation, one of the points was the students all feel like they have an adult in the building. That's, that's huge, that's huge. And I think that says a ton for what, what they're doing in our district. So for them to be feeling this way and, you know, is troubling to me and it's concerning. So it's something we've gotta work on, all of us, I'm not pointing the fingers at anybody, we're a team. And I think as a team, we need to strategize and figure out how we're gonna fix this because this is a divide and we gotta fix it, we gotta fix it.
Thank you. Yeah, Member Pena, we can go down the line, yeah.
Just, just a clarification, a question for April. The, the speech and language pathologist, so he's for two years, we've had six positions.
Unfilled.
Unfilled, for two years, six of them? And then we're proposing to get rid of just two, or we'll freeze the hiring of two. Okay, thank you.
And I'd just like to add to that, Member Pena, that this isn't the ideal, but what had to happen was that Special Education Department had to make decisions last summer, right, on compensatory services because there's just, there become, there's a point where the current speech and language pathologist cannot take a case overload, just they don't have enough time. So what they ended up doing was offering some of these hours during the summer. And I imagine that there will be, the same process will take place this summer. It's, again, that's the only way to, yes, it's, you know, there's federal compliance. However, it's not the ideal and it's not what we want. But despite recruiting efforts, despite Ms. McLaughlin and, you know, the previous special education administrator, they've looked at contracted services, they've tried to get, and Deputy Powers was, you know, part of trying to bring in additional speech pathologists and there were just no full-time hires. I don't know all of the root causes, whether it was pay or, you know, maybe they get paid more in the field. I don't, I'm not certain what it is, but we're gonna continue to explore how we can bring those, those specialists in.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Member Reed?
Thank you. First, I'll get this out the way, I echo Member Dugan's concerns. Ms. Ma, I understand the trade-offs and I think that you're correct in those trade-offs, but I think there has to be happy medium. But I'm not gonna elaborate on that, I think he kind of said all that had to be said. In terms of the, the vacant positions, were other budget items considered? I mean, how does this process work internally, as in terms of non-staffing positions? Are there other things in the budget that there's, you know, wiggle room in terms of like, even if it's, I understand the coaching position, that's a little bit different, but like in terms of the sort of, you know, the other positions, like were there other considerations?
So, and Mr. McHugh can elaborate here, but we've spent almost three months very diligently going over every single thing in the budgets, every single thing. And we have cut everything that is non-personnel that was not needed to try to bring this amount to get balanced. So there was really nowhere else to take from. We, I think, you know, it's balanced really because of Mr. McHugh's expertise, but like we have gone through hours and hours of cutting contracts and all sorts of things that, to get to this place, to balance and not to have anyone that is in a filled position be in a, in a circumstance where, you know, we're in any position to riff an administrator or a teacher or staff member. Mr. McHugh, you can.
Yeah, I mean, even the, even the supplies have been level funded this year because typically there is always additional supplies at the end of the year, so we didn't provide any increase. I forgot to mention, there is one piece of good news, you know, in all this. There's always a silver lining and it's, it kicked it, it reminded me was, I just wanna publicly thank Christina Colella because she's done a great job over as the Executive Director of Sped. We revamped our circuit breaker, you know, started training and everything else on that. And this past year, the state allowed all the other district tuition, the places we go to send our children, to get a fourteen percent increase on tuitions, which was, really hurt the budget. And that's, that's obviously rolling into next year. So what Christina did is they have a thing called Circuit Breaker Relief. So she did all the backbone and putting all the students in and getting it all done. So we actually got a letter on Monday, we got one point one million dollars. That's factored into this, so when I said this is hot off the press, I mean, that changed things to balance this budget out. So some of the good news, there's, some of the good news is five hundred, six hundred has to be spent this year and five hundred I can defer to next year, and I just got that on Tuesday, talking to the state. So as part of the pre-buy of curriculum supplies and technology, that money's gonna be used to help that side. But it also, if you go into your budget book, you'll see that I was able to reduce the budget allocation for special intuitions and put more into the, what it calls the grant out there, which says Circuit Breaker. So that is a piece of good news. So these things are happening throughout the year that we are looking at and I just, we just got this letter on Monday afternoon and, you know, it's great news that things are still happening, but that helps. So if anything happens, and that's what we're talking about, anything we can get early next year, any savings I can get, the goal is to put these back, the goal is not to, we're not closing, cutting them, they're just staying vacant right now. So I, I know it's not easy, but we got it down to these number of positions. So it's been a work in progress over the last few months and, you know, it's, someone said I didn't seem stressed today cuz I think I finished it and that's probably why. But it's, I feel better tonight, I'm not great about this, but there are, we're not, you know, letting people go. And I think that's, that's always been my goal, the first year I came, we let people go and I was like, I got dropped into that and it was not fun. Nobody wants to see that happen, so we're trying to just get this to balance out and make it work.
Can you talk specifically about what items you'd mentioned, non-personal items that had been reduced? Or, I mean, maybe this is a discussion for the, you know, budget, but something that was considered non-personal that was reduced or was considered being reduced?
There were some through curriculum, there were some, I'm not sure exactly, I don't have a list in front, but I know we met with the curriculum directors and things, that there were some like, like programs they had and things we were able to reduce. You'll see their budgets way down this year compared to what it was. So there were some of those, there were some efficiencies through our Power School. We went through all the Power School contracts with people and they're taking some pieces out of that. So we reduced some monies there, there were some other contracts that, you know, we went through. I don't have a list of everything, but we did go through all the departments and all their contracts to see if there was way to either, you know, take a piece out, reduce it, you know, things of that nature, so.
So when will these hypothetically be reopened if the money comes, is it just whenever it comes in or would be August? Cuz I know, I think these are frozen until July, at least the.
Well, it depends on, right now, this is the start of the FY budget, until I have funds available to fill those and.
What is that variable, I guess?
I couldn't give you a direct answer, I mean, do we, if we get more additional money from the state, absolutely. I mean, the budget has been passed by, you know, we'll probably get, see that, unfortunately, you know how the state works, it probably won't get passed to the first week in July, which will finalize our DESI numbers. And if there's an additional increase to what we, our appropriation, we would have to meet with the city to see if that would come to us. That's one. The others, if there are any other increase in grant funding, that we could move things into the grants to free up the appropriation budget, that happens over the summer. And if that happens, if that becomes available, then we can start looking at those. And then the next thing would be, where are we in September? We have two hundred and three jobs to try to fill. And if we start to get salary savings by not, if they don't, we can't still find people and we can find people for these other positions, that's a trade-off we would have to make at that point. So I think if I had to look at the process going forward, those were the steps that would be taken.
Thank you, and just two technical questions. How do you estimate from the local level, chapter seventy, for the next year? Like, you know, you'd said that, I think you thought it was more towards the twenty-four million dollar mark.
It's typically based upon like what's going on with the state, number one.
So it's like it's more of an art than a science.
Well, I mean, I can't be an exact, but I mean, we, I go to attend my, you know, affiliation meetings for Masbo, we call it Master Association of School Business Officials. And, you know, we get tidbits there, we have people from the state that come in and talk to us. So we can kinda, that's usually happening in October, November, we kinda get a, what's happening at the state level, where we're gonna go. And then obviously, it's about revenues for the state drives a lot of the, what happens, we all know that. And I mean, the, the good news, April's was up, if you heard that, so that's a, that's a good sign. But those are typically, and then, you know, we, after that, we wait to see in January when the final numbers come out.
A big, a big part of the variable is the state finances. It's also driven, as you know, on enrollment numbers in the district, whatever the number is, so.
And then last question, I haven't got a chance to look at this yet, obviously we just got this. Is it there a clear indicator what was funded by ESER and is now being absorbed by?
Yes, if you, when you open, you just open the book and maybe go, don't go to the first ones, I don't think there's much, but let's just say you go like to, I don't know, one of the schools.
Oh, I see it.
You see on the far right-hand column, anything was funded, like you'll say Title I, Sped Two Forty, those are all grants. And anything, now there might be, you'll see where their ESER is, there's a blank on the grant column cuz it wasn't, it was in the prior year, so you'll see all that.
Thank you, thanks, Kevin, appreciate it.
Member Castellanos?
Thank you, Kevin, for your presentation today and some clarity around some of the questions that were kinda, you know, are there a lot of us echo what Member Dugan shared? I think a lot of us got a little bit blindsided, I was up till almost one o'clock in the morning, fielding constituent questions and concerns. You know, we had Mr. Creely, people come up tonight to talk about some of their concerns about, you know, staffing issues and the need to initiate, you know, immediate, you know, responses and resolutions. And I know, you know, there's deficits that were, I think you guys probably, the largest deficit of a cut you guys probably have had to work through in a long time. So I know it's very difficult to have to balance out and make those difficult decisions fiscally. I learned that this wasn't really a personnel-related, I guess, I had a concern about why this was never shared with personnel as I'm chairman, and I learned that this wasn't related to personnel. But I think it's imperative that we have open lines of communication with your school committee cuz we have direct, you know, access to constituents and I think, I think that trade-off, I think Member, Mayor Nicholson, you brought up, is very fair, but sometimes our staff and folks don't know that, right? It's like, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, the rankings came out. It's been, it's been a devastating week for staff, it's been really difficult. And this is like kinda adding to the, fuel to the fire, you know, it's just, obviously, this isn't something that's ideal. And to, to see the, you know, the positions that are frozen and to look at the date of July first, right, that presents again some additional concerns of, we already, this isn't something new. It sounds like we've kinda had an anticipation of what was going on. I think it's so important to keep us in the line of communication so we could field and work together. So I'm not gonna go into the, how, I'm, I'm just, I'm very, I feel disappointed. I feel really like, I'm just frustrated with, like, just this week has just been, I, I felt a lot of the folks who've, that were here tonight, I, you know, it's emotional and I, I know we're, you know, I, it's, we gotta do better, we have to figure out a way to collaborate. I don't really support us freezing these positions, right, but we have to, right? This, what, Mr. McHugh's been doing this for a long time and this is his recommendation, right? This is something that we've, I think, April, you guys done a due diligence, right? You guys did your work to identify, these are key, this is where a lot of our current, I guess, for me, I guess, what are the recruiting efforts and strategies moving forward, right? When we talk about trying to figure out the root cause, we've had years to figure that out. I'm a little curious on what's been done to figure out the root cause. I don't know, there's no answer for that probably, but.
I think there are some answers in shortages in some of these fields. I mean, when we think about speech and language pathologists, that's one of those fields where there's a scarcity and it's not just in LPS, it's not just in the state of Massachusetts, it's across the country. You know, there are fields within education where there's a scarcity of people entering.
Special ed is another area that.
Inclusion.
You know, people are just not going into the field. And I remember when I was in college, way back when, it was a time where there wasn't a lot of special education licensed people. And I was lucky enough to get dual-licensed through Leslie College and got hired in Lynn immediately upon graduating because there weren't enough special education teachers. We are putting a lot of effort into non-licensed people who are interested in special ed and, you know, getting them resources, working with them, matching them with a master educator to help them get their license and we've had many get it because of that. So we are working hard to help get licenses for teachers who are interested in special ed, ESL, all those areas that people are just not going into.
You know, and we've also developed programming, programming like fellows so that if you're in your senior year at Salem State in some of these fields, if you come work for us and you come do your fellowship here, where we give you a mentor and a supervisor, we pay you a full salary. You know, so we have that type of program, we have a teacher pipeline where we're trying to build the, the, you know, capacity in these, in these areas where we're really struggling to fill the, the positions.
I would just add that the sharp increase of our newcomers has also increased the number of ELD positions that we need. And so the licensed teachers are just not growing as fast as the numbers are growing. SOP is a very, I've worked in five districts and it is a very hard position to fill. It is a very expensive degree and program. And so when you have folks that do not have generational wealth to take that kind of expense on, we are limited. So it, it's really about how do we get foundations, grants, the states, the colleges, universities to really invest in the public schools by reducing their tuition costs upfront so we can have more folks who are licensed and able to take on these positions.
Thank you, Member Sadowite.
So I thank you, Mr. McHugh, for clarifying that. I also as well just wanted to advocate that I as well felt like I was sort of blindsided as well as many emails that I got bombarded with yesterday for the same issue. And I don't think that it comes down to like, we understand that. Um, and I don't think that it comes down to like, we understand that we don't have, um, that people may not be going into these positions. We get that, but I think that, um, the real issue comes down to even if you guys get the information from the teachers, do they understand the reason for the freeze? So it's, it's not actually just freezing the position. But when we're not being able to elaborate this to them because we aren't aware, it makes it very difficult to communicate down the line. So I just wanted to second that. Thank you.
I just want to look at that, um, the decrease of our budget was nine million.
So that, that's not, it's not a decrease in the budget. That's a, that's a, the difference between the, the increase from this year to last year.
Okay, but it's still.
So, I mean, this is a very, I think, unique and, and somewhat complicated time fiscally, cause we're, we're dealing with the disappearance of the ESER funds in the context of the Student Opportunity Act implementation. So the, 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 as Kevin pointed out, the, the budget is up fourteen million dollars this year.
Yep.
Um, that's, you know, an, an increase. It's, it's a smaller increase than it was last year. But the, but the real issue here in terms of what I think was driving the crunch is the, is the ESER money rolling away. And, and, and if, if there hadn't been, uh, spending that was being, uh, done through ESER that we wanted to take on to the budget, I don't know that we would be faced with these same trade offs just because we had a smaller increase than we did the year before. But it's the, the context of that, I think, is, 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 you know, driving part of it. So that, you know, obviously we would not be in this situation had we had the same increase this year that we did the year before. And I think that's, you know, the point of, of, of pointing that out. Um, but I do think it's important to, you know, point out this, it's not a decrease in terms of the, the budget.
And, um, Dr. Alvarez, you were discussing something, you said contracts were cut, what contracts?
So we had, um, uh, last year and I guess the year before, and I'm not sure for whether it was all three years of ESER, but maybe you can speak a little bit more to this, but there were, um, it was very clear that some of the, um, partners that were funded, that it was an ESER, right? Supported cost and that it would only be for this past year and that there was no guarantee that there would be a refunding through our chapter seventy. Um, and I believe Ms. Rugiero reiterated that numerous times before I came to the district with partners. Um, and so those were some of the first places where we looked at, um, some of those partners, unfortunately, and the contracts that we had with them that we could no longer afford.
So I just want to clarify because some of the questions in those emails were like, we're gonna cut these jobs and we're never gonna get them back. And I want to clarify for people that are watching and for all the teachers that were here, and I wish they stayed because this is the most important, this is why they came. This is what we want to talk to them about.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's like they're not going to, they're just being frozen from May to the end of June. And then possibly this list will be, we'll be just waiting to see if we have people apply or waiting for money, Kevin.
We're probably waiting for money because of.
Waiting for money to fill them.
This is the FY twenty-five budget, so this is to balance out the budget.
Okay, so the only thing that was being frozen from May.
Those positions.
Right, from not May, but they were never filled.
They were never filled. They were all.
And teachers were exhausted as they were speaking in front of us. One teacher came up and said it was exhausting having that extra class on a regular basis from Lynn English, I believe. And the other thing I question is, um, Mr. Curly, he was questioning our facilities. That's what he was talking about, space and he needs space. And I know that I myself have been working on buildings and grounds really hard to find space. You too, Mr. Castellanos and Mr. Reed. And, and we've been sending out communication every month to let you know where we are. And I hope that's, that helpful. I, I, I think that this freezing came unexpected. But my question is, I, I did not have a, have a hard time picking up the phone and asking Dr. Alvarez what was going on.
Member Gately, if I could add, um, and I, I just want to point out to all the members, when you look at this vacant position chart, um, closely from the, really what we're looking at, um, from curriculum, the last line that says curriculum, uh, again, down to, and not including the last line because as Ms. Reed explained, there were not enough students to fill that Sped teacher position, right? Um, but the itinerant element, reading elementary, um, the ELD K to five itinerant, resource inclusion, speech and language pathologist, those are really, if you count those up, you're talking about three to five. Uh, you're, it's nine positions, right? Which would not necessarily be difficult to reopen because those are the nine essential positions. The coaches that are on top were academics. Um, we started that last year. And there was, you know, one of, one of, that model, um, is something that we're still need to discuss, even if it's effective, if we're going to continue to use coaches in the same way. Do we need to restructure? Um, you know, it, it was a brand new, so those thirteen positions were positions that I opened last year um, in July when we did the, the budget for, and it was on the basis that we were going to execute this new model in the high schools, um, with a plan and to try to improve student achievement, which we don't have all the data for, to begin with. Uh, and then above that, you'll see that those, the two clinicians on the line were never filled. Um, we're currently trying to also assess the ratios of clinicians to students, um, and to track that, to have some accurate information around that. Uh, because principals are, you know, sharing and expressing that, um, we're not necessarily at two fifty to one right now, but much lower than that. Um, so in terms of the caseloads and so we're, we're trying to make that determination and make that assessment. So I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, the nine positions are really the ones that we're, we're concerned about and want to put back in because they're absolutely necessary. Um, the other positions are, you know, you have one administrator, another, uh, the communication specialist position, which is just a contract and, um, the others were the coaches, again, that we, we're still assessing a model that was implemented this year.
And then can I just, I just, I want to review April Reed's numbers. We had three hundred and fifty-seven jobs that were posted recently. Three hundred and what? Three hundred and fifty-seven jobs posted in our posting recently. There are two hundred and three positions that are unfilled after call downs. So we still have two hundred and three jobs that we need to fill. So when you kind of think about those numbers and the nine that we're not getting rid of, we're just saying, we're holding on them, we're freezing them, let's fill these two hundred and three. Get those filled with licensed people and then we'll reevaluate and see where we are.
So I think that I was sort of surprised also, like the other school committee members and blindsided when someone called me and asked me about it, um, on the committee. And I had experience with budgets before. I sort of understood that we're in the process of the budget. Um, I think it's, I agree with Mr. Castellanos that the timing may not have been perfect because it is Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, we did hear some devastating news about our ranking in the state. It's been a really tough week for everybody involved, I think. So we can work on our communications and because of that, I would like to bring up to you, Mr. Mayor, that we as a committee have a retreat. We need a retreat. We need to sit down and discuss what, what every member on this committee needs to know and we need it. I, I don't know if my other members on the committee agree with me on that. The retreat always helped me in the past. I think it could help the new members.
Thank you, thank you. Member Reed.
Sorry, I know it's getting late. I just got to make a couple of last points. Um, I mean, like even, I understand it's just nine position. I, I understand the thinking behind it, but it's still like taking money away from the, the staffing portion of it. And that's the bigger picture. And I think that's where a lot of the frustration comes from. It's not just the individual, individual positions. Um, so that's my first point. My second point is, I do think, I had to say this one because I wouldn't be able to sleep tonight. I was already thinking about it. I, I truly think that this sheet right here, the per, you know, the per pupil expenditure is a very big oversimplification of sort of how we look at how districts are spending. Um, whether it's admin or other things. I mean, there's a lot of variables there, so I would like to see a deeper dive in terms of number of positions, salary of positions, like, I don't know, I just think that this one is a little oversimplified. Uh, my last point is just, you know, I know we can't predict everything, but some of these, some of this ESER stuff, looking back and looking forward, just, you know, what can we do differently? You know, especially when we're hiring consultants, when we're hiring admin, hiring all these, you know, different, all these different initiatives. What can we do so that we don't have to cut teachers? And I think that's sort of something that we have to think about more going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And, and, uh, thank you, Mr. McHugh and, uh, the financial team and, and really all the folks, uh, that have worked on this budget so far. There's a lot of efforts to start, you know, at the school level with the, uh, different school administrations and, and getting a lot of input throughout the process. I also really appreciate all the, the members, your, your questions and, and comments, as well as everyone we heard from earlier this evening. It, it certainly has been a challenging week and it is a, uh, challenging moment in education generally. And I think we see that around the country. And so we're incredibly fortunate to have a extremely dedicated team throughout the district, our, our, our teachers, our, our staff, our administrators. Um, and we are, uh, only, uh, better off to be gathering more input and, and getting those questions so that we can incorporate those ideas as well as, um, you know, drive, uh, further towards our goals and towards a, a common understanding. So I, I certainly appreciate everyone's participation and, and look forward to, uh, continued discussion on that. So, thank you. Next item is, uh, any votes taken in the policy subcommittee. Member Dugan.
Yes, we had, uh, three policies that we voted on to put to the full committee, so I'd like to just take them individually. Uh, so I'd be looking for motions for each of these, uh, to vote for the full committee. The first was maximum age for admission and attendance policy, and that is coded J E B A. And, and I apologize, let me back up a minute, uh, members, each of you had, uh, each of these policies in your packet. So if you have any questions, um, you know, feel free to ask before we take the votes on each individual one. So anyway, the first one is maximum age for admission and attendance, and that is coded J E B A.
Let's get, let's get it second and then we'll do discussion. So, is there a second? Uh, second. Okay, discussion. Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Okay, the second one is attendance, absences and excuses, excuses, uh, excused absences. That is coded J H. Um, and again, that is one that we, um, basically took away the D minus policy, which is something that, um, that the public has been asking for. So that's something we did. Uh, again, was in your packet, so looking for a motion to approve there for the full committee.
Motion to approve, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And before I get to this last one, I just want to make sure I publicly acknowledge, uh, all the people that were involved in all three of these, Charlie Gallo especially, um, but there were also lots of administrators and teachers that really worked diligently on each of these policies, uh, to really get us up to date. They looked at a lot of data. Um, and, um, you know, this wasn't, you know, an easy process at all. So I do want to publicly acknowledge everybody that was involved, especially our attorney Gallo, who, uh, really kind of guided this process with these three particular policies. And then the last one, uh, was the student dress code, which was coded J I C A. Um, and again, this one just kind of tightened it up, uh, just kind of, it was a little vague. Um, and this is something that, uh, the dress code, uh, we kind of agreed, it's something, you know, every other year or so is something we should be looking at. So that's what we did. Uh, just kind of made it a little, you know, more clear what the students can and cannot be wearing uh, at school. So then again, student dress code coded J I C A.
Excuse me, Ms., uh, Member Dugan.
Oh, did I get that wrong?
Supposed to be effective September twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, effective September twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Ms. Jules.
Make a motion to approve, sec. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yep.
Okay, I have this question on, on this. Number one, each student must wear the following. I didn't pick up on this at the meeting, but um, shirt or other clothing top that fully covers the midriff, chest and back. Um, can we put some wording in there about what, like, is it like a strap, like what shoulders, what's on the shoulders? Like you can cover, I could see someone showing up in a tube top with this, cause it would cover the front and the back and could cover the midriff. But it doesn't have anything, any wording about the straps.
Fully cover.
Yeah, that's a, I think that the conversation kind of geared around, um, just the clothing that's available to, to, to youth these days. Um, so it would be difficult, I guess. I think that's sort of where they came about that. Um, and I think the words fully covers, um, were, were important there as well. Um, I don't know if that answers your question, Member Gately, or not.
It, it doesn't, cause it just says fully covers the midriff, chest and back.
Okay, so is there something you'd like to recommend we, we put there?
Well, can, can I just ask the administration to weigh in on that?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Um, so when we had this final discussion and, um, Deputy Corrus could also elaborate from the secondary principals perspect, you know, the communication, but the whole policy was really revised to set standards and high expectations, but at the same time not get into um, situations where we're placing teachers in positions where they're having to enforce gear, clothing, dress codes, right? Because it, it should not, that, that should not be the focus of what's happening in a classroom. Um, and also not getting into, um, confrontations with adolescents. That, that was one of the clear, points of clarity that we made. Um, and so, you know, we're not necessarily saying like you can't show your shoulders, right?
Right.
What, what we're just saying is that you must be covered so that none of your body is exposed where it should not be exposed. Um, so not really making an issue of whether your shoulder is out or not. If your shoulder's out because you're wearing a shirt that, you know, happens to have either sleeves or is sort of cut this way or, but it's not that your back is exposed or, um, you know, that it's deeply so cut or, you know, just, and having, you know, administrative procedures follow this so that across our schools, we're implementing this, um, in the same way and having the same high expectations of what our students are expected to wear. Um, and also having them understand what they're expected to wear.
Yeah, I have been, um, very vocal that the conversations with the students and families is about ensuring that their wardrobe is, um, preparing them for the future. I, I gave an example of, um, having found a job for a teen and the teen didn't have any clothes to be able to wear at that job because none of what he had was appropriate, right? So ensuring that the dress code. So ensuring that the dress code offers an opportunity for students to have many things available to them. For, um, any future opportunity such as an internship, a volunteer or, um, a paid job. In addition, uh, a tube top would be considered showing your back. So they would be in violation of the policy because the upper back is showing. It's not covered.
Well, in this whole policy that I read over, it was well done, well written. If I was with my experience as a secondary teacher years ago, that would be the problem. But I don't have to put it in here. We can leave this and see if it works. That's fine with me. But if, if there's a weakness in this policy, it's A.
Member Reed.
I, I think Member Gal, I mean, sorry, Attorney Gallo did mention too, that this is a policy that we should probably be reviewing more often. Uh, than other policies because it's something that obviously taste and styles and, uh, change often. So I, I think this is probably a reoccurring, uh, policy to look at and so.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Satterwhite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Member Dugan and the members of the, the subcommittee. And, uh, all the, the team from the administration that worked on this. I also know we got a lot of feedback from the, from the cabinet. So thank you to all the folks that participated. Um, you know, I, 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 I think it's worth just pausing for a moment on the, um. School age to point out that that is a change that is gonna require us as a, as a whole community to, to really step up and identify. Um, programming for those, uh, students. And, um, we really appreciate all the help from the, the, uh, school administration that's been helping us think that through, uh, with our partners. Um, adult education providers, higher education providers. Um, and, you know, we're, we're very hopeful, um, to get something in place that, that really better meets their needs and, and, and ultimately. Um, so thanks everyone for that. Communications.
We don't have any today.
No communications?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Great. Seeing nothing further on the agenda?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.